Hello, welcome to Reality TV. I'm Raymond Bakari. Today, I'm joined by City Councilwoman Mary Kay Harris, who represents Ward 11 in the city. The ward itself contains the neighborhoods of Upper South Providence and West End. Councilwoman Harris, how are you today?
I am great, thank you. It's a pleasure to be on your show, so thank you for having me.
It's great to have you on. My first question, it's a general question I like to ask elected officials about their political origin story. What made you want to get into politics?
Well, I wanted to get into politics because the basic is the simple thing. I think all politicians probably say, I want to make a change. And I actually started out in a background of community organizing. And with that community organizing, I was able to work within the community. And, you know, from a grassroots perspective, changed a lot of policies. I'm very proud to say with our Providence External Review Authority was a part of the work that I had done with many of my members of the community. That's called PARA. I also worked with a coalition of people to address the issue around foreclosure, which, you know, those are things I'm bragging on and perhaps I'm very proud of it. Providence have also have been, you know, observed from these things that we have done here, you know, from a perspective of community, city, and community members working together. So my background actually started in a social justice political arena. And yes, I do, I did want to make a change within my neighborhood and my community and set out to do that. And so within 15 years of working with background of community organizing, the community just thought I was right for politics now. You know, this is another level of how you make change. And I somewhat resisted in the beginning because I didn't think that, you know, the work that I was doing would apply to the work that I need to do now as a politician. But I really appreciate my background because my background prepared me for the work that I'm doing now. And it has been very rewarding, you know, to continue that and learn things such as how you build real political power.
We are in an election year. You are finishing up your second term, I believe, on the council. Just to clarify for those watching, since all the council seats are up for this year, are you running for, are you planning to run for reelection in Ward 11?
Yes, I finally made up my mind I'm gonna run again. But I have to give you a little background of, like I said, the community felt like I would be the best fit for South Providence. You know, I was born and raised in, not born and raised, but reared up in South Providence. And so, you know, just knowing the neighborhood, they thought I was the best for the position at the time that mine, and so they elected me in office. The second time I was like, oh, you know what? If somebody run against me, that's okay, but nobody did. And so this time, Raymond, I am so excited about going back. I'm excited about all that I've learned within the eight years. And just knowing that I will be definitely needed and affected in my position when I do go back is, you know, got me really excited. This time I am really ready to run.
And a big part of the city council campaigns is usually centered around canvassing, you know, knocking on doors, just generally hearing what's on your neighbors' minds about issues they want to see you tackle as a city councillor. What are some of the big issues that you're hearing from residents this time around?
Well, of course, you know, we have found ourselves over the years with outdated housing stock. And the neighborhood that I serve is a neighborhood, like I said, I grew up in. And as I started to see the changes in the neighborhood, one of the things that people are very concerned about is housing. And, you know, we start to see it even more, the evidence of how housing is needed even more within my ward. You know, it's just from the beginning of, the beginning of my ward, as we start north to south, we start to see a lot of people who are displaced and without shelter, you know? And so a lot of people are concerned about that. They are concerned about, you know, the, you know, keeping the streets clean and, you know, the basic needs and sidewalks and, you know, just having quality of life. So they have a lot of concerns here and they make it very clear for me. And I have been working really close with my neighbors. Like you said, it's door knocking and canvassing. I, you know, I have eight years of experience, so my neighbors somewhat know me. I do have a new area where I have to go get to know new people. So I might know a little bit more about what their complaints are once I know I come near their doors.
Looking at the issue of housing, it's actually the first one I have here for specific issues to talk about. You have experience now in the, in the council. You've been on the council for, for, for two terms. And this is a perennial issue in the city that's going to need an all hands on deck approach. And it could be approached in multiple ways. I've heard ideas like the zoning laws and ideas like rent control. You know, based on the experience you've seen when it comes to the policy, how does the issue of creating more affordable housing get solved on the city level?
I think, you know, what was excited about my second term, well, we had an opportunity to make, take a stand and make that one of our legislations, right? A political legislation as a team and as council members, all 15 of us, really taking on the issue around housing. And the state itself, you know, actually convincing them that, you know, first of all, we had an outdated housing comprehensive plan, you know, state comprehensive plan. We also, you know, the state really wasn't entertaining the idea of housing. But we are in that, in that era of time right now where, I think in the last term, it started to be really evident that this is something we really have to focus on and really put all hands on deck in. So yes, we have, from all aspects, you know, different council people have different approach to what we would take. Like you said, it's going to take a lot, a lot of, you know, movement, a lot, a lot of different things, whether it's addressing rent control, whether it's addressing foreclosure still, that's still happening. And, you know, as we start to see the economy change, we're not sure whether that is still going to be one of the issues that we have to still think about, address and come up with strategy. One of the things I'm proud of my council, I'm, I'm, I'm very proud. And that's, that's another reason why I want to go back, Raymond. I'm very proud because the council itself took on the initiative of, we had an outdated housing trust fund. And they took on, along with, you know, the work that we done together, took on the initiative around taking the tax stabilization agreements and 10% of that going back into our outdated housing trust fund. With that, I have some houses that's going to be built in my neighborhood based on the fact that the council seemed that that was a serious issue that we needed to work on right away and something that was simple enough that we could do. I have houses that have taken advantage of that housing trust as gap money to be able to create some housing, new housing that's coming in my neighborhood based on, you know, us working together like that. We also, you know, took out a bond to make sure we increased the housing trust. And that funding is being used, you know, in ways that it is fulfilling some of the housing from the city perspective as gap funding. So I'm excited.
One of the ideas I've also heard from candidates, more at the state level than the city level, is, you know, just building more housing. There's the whole supply and demand argument. One of the mayoral candidates, actually, that you ended up endorsing on, Gonzalo Cuervo, he brought up the idea of building housing where Triggs Golf Course is located. And it's an interesting proposal and there's a lot of land over there. I know it's not necessarily in your ward, but is that an idea you could see yourself supporting?
I actually do see myself supporting, simply because, you know, there is a, well, there is a legislation, 10% housing should be sprayed out throughout Providence. And that definitely matches that, that, that resolution or that ordinance around the 10%, right? And so I absolutely do support that. Yes, the idea of housing being built, more housing being built. But Raymond, I have to keep it real. I really have to keep it real because I'm from the South Providence area. And I look at income. I look at the wage and wages and income of my neighbors and people who are being mostly somewhat left out of the equation of housing. I believe in homeownership because I believe in the consistency of homeownership. And I believe in, you know, you know, houses, even moderate income housing. But Raymond, to be honest, we need more low income. Because those are the people I see that are displaced. I see more of it here is because we have so many services that we offer people that it is evident that it is a problem with income and housing, you know? So I definitely push that, but I support 100% my endorsed candidate idea of housing. I think that's creative. I think he's smart about thinking like that.
Looking at city finances, just shifting away from the, from the topic of housing, voters approved the $515 million pension obligation bond and passed the GA. Depending on if it goes further than that, the mayor said he wants to look at, look at a little more, depending on the situation of the economy right now. Did you end up supporting or opposing that bond?
I, you know, I supported that bond simply because of this, we have to do something. We have to do something. And I support it based on, I support it based on the fact that we have some kind of safety guard, right? And I think that's basically what the mayor is talking about. What is the safeguard for that? And I think the councils have been very, very clear that there has to be some kind of safety net in place in order for us to take that chance based on the fact that we don't know what the economy, what was going to happen in the future of the economy. So we are, you know, we have to do something because if not, the debt that we owe towards that pension is taken away from our constituents. It's taken away from our playgrounds. It's taken away from our streets, our infrastructure and all the things that our neighbors and cleaning of streets, you know, the things, the service that the city offer. It would be, it would have, the pension has to be paid some way or the other because it exists. So those are the things that we have to consider. So it's a catch 22, you know? I'm stuck in the middle of, okay, we have to do that. However, we don't want to be putting ourselves in a, in a position that we have to pay a higher interest rate down the road, right? Or put ourselves in a position of that. And so I think where we are right now is just working through what the state has decided on and trying to figure out that we have some type of safety net that for the new incoming council people like myself and my candidate I'm endorsing coming into this work would, you know, have an opportunity not to be entrapped in something that this administration has put about. So I think it's a lot of, you know, really, you know, you also know that our constituents also voted and the voters have, you know, had a right to vote on it. So they have voted in favor of it. You already said that, you know, both the House and the General Assembly have passed it. And I'm understanding that the governor is also signing off on it. So it's really important that we really think through this really well. And I think that's where we are right now. So I think that's why it's going to swing back, not only to the mayor, but to the council as well.
And the bond, it's, it's part of the, the solution that's, it's been argued by candidates and current elected officials in the city. But it's, and this is something I've heard from other candidates, it's not going to be the silver bullet and act as the only solution. There's still got, still going to be more work to, to do. And I've heard a number of solutions on the show, like moving forward, like say, for example, going to a hybrid option with the state, maybe just getting more revenue for the unfunded liability. There's, there's a lot of ideas have been said on the show. We've talked about this issue quite a bit. Are there any additional solutions you believe could help solve the pension crisis aside from the, from the bond?
I haven't really dug deep into what else, other than what you've said. I've heard people, including my candidate, you know, bring up different solutions. But I think, yeah, it's going to take a lot of, I mean, we cannot keep kicking can down the road. It's the bottom line, we can't. And so it has to take a lot of strategic thinking behind what do we do? Because this is not the, you're absolutely right. It's not the only solution. And again, we don't know what the economy is going to be down the road. We, you know, we are hearing stuff like there's a recession coming our way or whatever. We don't really know until, you know, we all come together and say, look, this is only one aspect of it, but is there other opportunities? I, I welcome that as well. I welcome the thinking behind it. And would like to, you know, as, as returning to the office, like to be a part of those conversations.
One conversation, although it was from the state level, because the state would have to pass a bill like this before the city, the city could act on it, is taxing the private colleges in the city, like Brown University, PC, RISD, and JWU that take up a large chunk of land but don't pay any taxes. Where do you stand on the idea of taxing the private colleges?
I've always said that, that exactly, the private colleges have, at the beginning, you know, we understood why there was taxes on. But the private colleges seem to be taking up a lot of land. There's a lot of, you know, expansion that's, that's going on within the colleges. And I, you know, hearing from the students, there is no burden, you know, burden taken from them as they expand. So there is nothing really being returned, in return. I definitely welcome that idea. I have said it over and over and I think I've said it out loud several times. And I think I've said it during the time we were creating a reparation committee. I think I've said it publicly, you know, that, that these colleges and these private institutions should be paying their fair share. And absolutely, I think that is another direction we can go in.
Moving on to the, in the environment and the issue of climate change, it's definitely a key one going into this election cycle. We have some candidates supporting a Green New Deal, sort of like how Boston did. I know the city has a climate justice plan too. Would you support any city-level Green New Deal?
I, right now, have started to do a little bit more research and background on what the city is doing around environmental stuff, right? Simply because, I had to, simply because in the registry, I also have the Providence Port. And there's a lot of work that's going on in the Providence Port that has triggered a lot of conversation around the environmental, you know, environmental justice and what is the right thing to do, whether there's a green deal or whatever. I have not entertained a lot of that conversation to say where I stand right now on the issue. I am doing my own research and background in. I support anything that would help change where we are going in the direction we're going. For years, I have tried to entertain conversation around environmental justice, even in my, before I came to the council. So, yeah, I, I still would need to be able to research even more on, you know, what does that really mean? And how does it really affect us?
This next one is more specific to Ward 11 and it's more of a positive kind of a thing I want to talk about because, because I often talk about issues like policing, education. And just to change things up, I saw yesterday Davy Lopes Pool was reopened after last year. It was closed to undergo compliance and construction repairs. Someone watching from Ward 11 or even, you know, other parts of Providence may not know about the reopening. Can you just explain for those watching a little bit how significant is this pool is finally reopened again? And what it adds to the ward now as we head to the summer?
Raymond, you may not know, but that pool's been, been giving us trouble for 12 years. Before I even entered into office, the pool was being threatened to be closed completely, right? And which gave an uproar in the community. Now you got the community paying attention to this neighborhood pool, something that's needed in the neighborhood. And so back and forth, I got in office. Unfortunately, everything, every penny that was put in the pool wasn't solving the problem. So yesterday, the sniffers of that is that we finally were able to get a property director who really seriously, you know, really dug deep to find out what the problem was with that pool and was able to address it in a way that the pool itself is going to be very important for the community. Before the pool even opened last year and the year before, young people were playing in fire hydrants, right? They were playing in fire hydrants in order to stay cool. In fact, I don't even think the firemen's even minded being in the fire hydrants because there was no pool that were open. It's going to mean a lot to our community because first of all, David Lopes is one of the most healthiest centers that any child can spend time at. And anybody that has went through David Lopes knows there is children, tons and tons of children of all backgrounds that spend a lot of time at David Lopes. Of course, they need those resources. Of course, they need to be able to even learn how to swim, Raymond. The statistics show that African-American black kids basically don't know how to swim. And so those are the kind of things that we need resources in our community for that purpose of them not only having a pool to stay safe and cool and a safe place to go, which many of them do go. It's more than just a ribbon cutting. It's the fact that this pool has really had the investment that it really needs and really has been bought up to date. So I don't have my fingers crossed. I know this pool is going, it's okay this time because of the 12 years of waiting for it. So it was a big deal, not only for myself, who have heard neighbors and children. I had a young person before the pandemic. I was at one of their little functions. She must have been about seven years old. She looked at me and she goes, "Our pool is closed." I said, "Well, you're telling the right person. I'm going to go tell the mayor," you know? So we're so excited. That was a really great day. Community came out, you know, folks that have been involved. Artists have bade that place so beautiful with the arts that they have been able to create over there. So, yeah, my kids are going to be safe this summer.
It certainly will add a lot to the ward and it was, it was fitting timeframe that summer is now, like first day of summer officially and boom, you have a pool. So that's definitely going to add a lot to the community.
A beautiful pool.
Exactly. I saw, I saw, I saw, I wasn't there in person, but I saw the clip on Twitter. It was really, it was a really nice looking pool. Shifting the focus to just a couple of new ideas that are being floated for the city's charter as the review is still going on. One of them is making Providence's school committee become elected. Currently, their mayor appointed. Should Providence's school committee be elected?
I would leave that up to the parents to make a decision on that. I have no, I have not a nickel in that dime as far as, you know, what they feel the school board is doing or not doing. I am not big on elected boards, but, you know, I would actually, and I have said that. I've said it out loud. I have no children in school. I think we take a lot away from our parents, not allowing them to be the decision makers or be inclusive in things that when we move forward on things. So as this, as this is being discussed, I'm really interested in what the parents would say about the system they would like to see in place. And that's all fairness in my heart.
Another idea, this is one that some of your colleagues on the council I've interviewed favor, is adding at-large council seats. One councillor I talked to, she said that the way she would favor it is if it would take a couple of the awards away and then have like, I think she said, three at-large council seats, kind of like Cranston. Where do you, where do you stand on the idea of adding at-large council seats?
I am totally against at-large council seats. And I'll tell you why. I feel like it is, it would definitely increase this class struggle of where, who gets served and who doesn't get served. I truly don't believe that if there was, you know, if there was, you know, at-large members, that most of them would be concerned about what happens in South Providence. Or the fact that they could even be a part of decision-making about South Providence. I believe because of the way that the at-large members have to be able to, to get into that position, not many of my constituents would be able to be, able to be able to run for that position. So for me, I feel like the council people are elected by their people to do what they supposed to do. And if they don't do what they supposed to do, I believe you have every right to, you know, re, unelect that person and move on to a person that you think you can depend on. I think it will cause more incompetence of how things are being processed right now. You know, I just learned how to really get to some of the services and get some things done, you know, because it's been so complicated because of the bureaucratic makeup of the politics. So I have not been in favor of that. I don't, unless someone can convince me that it's the best thing ever, I think I would still remain in the position I am. I definitely oppose it.
Those ideas on the charter review are still up in the air because it's still being discussed. Looking at one guarantee that's going to happen in January 2023, there will be a new city council president. You're currently the deputy majority leader and have served two terms on the council. Do you have any plans to maybe run for city council president in January if reelected?
I have no plans to run for president. But Raymond, I have learned not to say, things don't happen. It was not my intent to be deputy majority leader, but, you know, that position was open and offered to me, you know? So I don't, you know, I really want to do the work of the people and it's not the position. The most important thing for me when I entered into the council was to have an office. I'm a people person and I really love really working with people one-on-one. So most important thing for me at that time was being able to have an office, not so much as a title. So I believe, I don't know exactly what happens. I don't want to put myself on the spot because I also said I wasn't running again. And look at me talking to you now, all excited about running again. So I don't really know how to, in my heart, I have no desire to run for council president, but, you know, you never know. It depends on circumstances, situations and the council people that we bring in.
There is also a mayoral election this year on the same ballot that you're running for reelection. And I mentioned it earlier in one of the earlier questions, you endorsed Gonzalo Cuervo for the mayoral race. Was there a specific reason behind endorsing Mr. Cuervo over Brett Smiley or Councilwoman LaFortune?
Well, I spend a lot of time, this is really something. I'm a type of person that, like I said, I like people and I like engaging. I like to let you know what's in my mind and my heart, whether I'm correct or whether I'm not correct. I just like people to know. We have spent a lot of time together. One thing I can say, Gonzalo's wanted me. He wanted to really get my endorsement. And I say that to say this, we spend a lot of time talking about issues together, working on different things that, you know, from my perspective of my direct contact with people on the ground, you know, bringing those issues out, asking questions, going back and forth. So I believe that the reason I have taken the time to really endorse him is because he's taken the time to really build that trust and build that relationship with me. It wasn't like, "Oh, Mary Kay, will you just endorse me?" No, we spent a lot of time back and forth, meeting, talking, talking with our neighbors, you know? So there was a lot of pre-work put into my thoughts, into my decisions. And to me, he fits more of, I can't say that much about the other candidates because they have not spent that time. And I knew it was getting nearer time where I had to be sure my direction if I was going back, where I was going and how I would align myself. So I don't know whether that make any sense. I know it's long-winded, but that's why I spent time, I endorsed him.
Were there any conversations with the other candidates about an endorsement?
I have had a conversation with Councilwoman Nervor LaFortune, but she never asked me to endorse her.
Shifting to the, my final question, it's a non-political topic. It takes a step away from all the political issues and I ask everyone on the show to keep the tradition. In your opinion, what do you think Rhode Island is best known for?
Oh, my goodness. Well, I guess, I got several, but one of the things, the beautiful people. How I know? Because I've traveled. I've done a lot of traveling. They say Rhode Island has the best beautiful people. That's number one. Second one is that Superman building, no matter where you go. Third one is our judge, Frank Capigo. And that's what Rhode Island is known for.
Those are really good Providence-centered answers. I really, I really liked it. That's the first time I heard the judge and he's nationally famous. The show, the show is nationally syndicated, I believe. You can, and then the clips on YouTube get, get millions of views. That, that's so true. I really appreciate that answer. That's the first time.
My, my family's from North Carolina and my oldest sister, before she passed, wanted to meet the judge. And she did. She got a chance to meet him. In my background, my picture's here, is he endorsed, and, you know, endorsed a picture for her. She's from North Carolina and boy, did she go on and on about the judge, even in North Carolina, he's very famous. So, yes, he is a famous guy. And I really appreciate what he has been able to do to highlight Rhode Island, highlight Providence spirit.
He absolutely is. I have, I haven't met him personally, but I've heard a lot of great things from people who have met him in my family.
Go down to the court because he loves when visitors visit his court. Call him up and go in the court one day and visit him from there.
I'll definitely have to do that. That might be an episode of Reality TV in itself. Councilwoman, I want to thank you so much for coming on the show. It's been an absolute pleasure mine to have you on.
Thank you. Thank you, Raymond. Nice to meet you as well.
And thank you for watching this. And thank you for watching this episode of Reality TV. If you want to see future episodes, as soon as they're posted on this channel, please click the subscribe button down below and the post certification bell icon to the right of it. I'm Raymond Bakari and I'll see you on the next episode.